Right, good evening. I'd like to call to order the virtual Lakewood City Council meeting for Lakewood, Colorado on October 10th, 2022. If you are joining us this evening via telephone, that number is going to be 720-707-2699. The webinar ID for the meeting, whether you're dialing in on the telephone, which I just read, or just logging on is 849-573-20840. And you'll press pound twice. And then when we get to the public comment portions, it'll be a star nine and a star six to request to speak. I'll now ask the clerk to please call roll.
Paul.
Here.
Abel.
Here.
Franks.
Here.
Jansen. Counselor Jansen.
I don't see her yet.
Maya Guerrero.
Here.
Vincent.
Here.
Strom.
Here.
Sharazai.
Here.
Springsteen. Think she might, she might be arriving late.
Yep.
Stewart is absent. Counselor Olver.
I don't see Counselor Olver either at this point.
Mayor Paul, you have a quorum.
Okay. All right. So before we stand for the pledge of allegiance and a moment of silent prayer, I'd like to just acknowledge that we're observing Indigenous Peoples' Day in the city of Lakewood as well in this, as well as in the state of Colorado. So with that, if you please join me, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Thank you very much. So moving on into our agenda, I'll just read our conflict of interest statement. All members of the city council have their responsibility to comply with the terms of Charter 7.2B and excuse themselves from voting on any matter in which they determine they have a personal, financial, or business interest. The city council is empowered by Charter 7.2B to agree by unanimous vote excluding the member at issue to excuse any member of the council from voting on a matter in which they determine such member has personal, financial, or business interest. I'll move us into general public comment. This is the point in the meeting where the public is invited to address the city council on items that are not included on the agenda. All comments should be directed to the city council. I ask that all persons calling in observe the same decorum of a city council meeting held in chambers. If you are in the audience and you wish to speak, you can press star nine. And when we get to you, please give us your name and address or name and ward. There's a three minute time limit. When you're at 30 seconds, you'll hear a, and then when your time is up, you will hear that same thing again. I will acknowledge that there are five public comments on Lakewood Speaks relating to dog park and dog bowls. So with that, Mr. Clerk, open public comment. Anybody wishes to speak, please press star nine. Public comment, star nine. Okay, we will now close public comment and move into the consent agenda. The use of the consent agenda has been made to expedite council action. It contains both resolutions and first reading ordinances. Resolutions are items of a routine nature. Members of the public will have an opportunity in a moment to comment on any of the proposed resolutions. Do not see any first reading ordinances. So any council member may request an item on the consent agenda be removed for separate discussion and action under general business. Will the clerk please read the consent agenda into the record?
The consent agenda consists of the following items. Item six, resolution 2022-58, appointment, appointing members to the Lakewood Advisory Commission. Item seven, resolution 2022-59, appointing members to the Board of Appeals. Item eight, approving minutes of the city council meetings, city council regular meeting, September 12th, 2022, city council regular meeting, September 26th, 2022. Item nine, accepting minutes of the boards and commissions, LAC Executive Committee, May 4th, 2022, LAC Executive Committee, June 1st, 2022, LAC Full Committee, May 18th, 2022, LAC Full Committee, June 15th, 2022.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. I'll now open the public hearing on the consent agenda. Does anybody wish to speak? Please go ahead and raise your hand. Same, same rules, three minutes. Star nine to speak on the consent agenda. Seeing none, I'll close that. Before I ask for a motion in a second, I would like to turn it over to our screening committee chair. We have two special resolutions tonight, items six and seven, and I would like to turn that over to Counselor/Chair Barb Franks.
Thanks, Mayor Paul. We certainly, as a screening committee, want to thank everyone who applied and who interviewed with us. We certainly enjoyed those sessions and certainly it is always so heartwarming to see all of the participation in the community. I did want to acknowledge the folks that are putting forth for recommending for the LAC are Sarah Foster, Floyd Jeffries, and Glenn Wedock, and for Board of Appeals, Diane Volmer and John Barnhart. So thank you all. I hope some of you are online. Yes, I do see some of you in the attendees list. So, so we're very excited to put your name forth. Thank you, Mayor.
Great. And Counselor Franks, I show two others, Rena Fowler and Sarah Griffin as well, I think, for the LAC. And I'm getting some yeses, so I would certainly like to just acknowledge them as well.
Oh, absolutely. Apologies. I was reading off of the screen, looking over here and hold down. But thank you, Mayor, for correcting that. Appreciate it.
Great. So Mayor Protem, I would welcome a motion on the consent agenda.
Thank you. Mayor Paul, I move for the approval of council minutes, acceptance of the minutes of the boards and commissions, and for adoption of resolutions, all of which are included in the consent agenda items introduced in, excuse me, introduced into the record by the city clerk.
A second.
Great. We have a motion, a second, any discussion or comments. I just have one comment and certainly just want to thank our folks who are willing to step up and engage and serve on these boards and commissions. It's so important and we value your time and effort and just your dedication of the community. So I'm excited to support this going forward and would ask with a motion, a second, if there's no other discussion, please cast your votes.
I, I'm there.
All right. So let the record note that Counselor Abel is an I, and I believe that would pass with eight I's, seven I's, wait. Counselor May Guerrero, okay. Seven I's and zero nays and four absents. So congratulations and welcome. All right. Well, the clerk, please read item 10 into the record.
Item 10, resolution 2022-60, approving the 2023 operating plan, 2023 budget, and appointment nomination of Ryan Williams, and the reappointment nomination of Phil Shapiro, and the city of Lakewood and Lakewood Reinvestment Authority liaison nomination of Katie Faltis to the Board of Directors for the Alameda Corridor Business Improvement District.
All right. I'll now open the public hearing on resolution 2022-60 pertaining to these appointments. Seeing no hands, I'll close that. And Mayor Protem, I'll ask for a motion.
Mayor Paul, I move for the adoption of resolution 2022-60.
Okay, looks like Counselor Frank seconded that. So we have a motion and a second. And again, I would like to thank those folks who are willing to step up and serve on this and all the great work that this group does. So with that, please cast your votes.
Yes.
Okay, record reflect that Counselor Abel is a yes, and that would be seven I's and zero nays for absent. Thank you. Mr. Clerk, will you please read item 11 in the record?
Item 11, resolution 2022-61, approving the 2023 operating plan and 2023 budget for the Lakewood West Colfax Business Improvement District.
Okay, I'll now open the public hearing on resolution 2022-61. Star nine to request to speak on this topic. Okay, seeing none, I'll close public comment and just mention that there is no presentation. However, there's questions, we'll do our best to have those answered. There is also a lot of information on Lakewood Speaks, an extensive packet of information. So Mayor Protem, could I please have a motion?
Mayor Paul, I move for the adoption of resolution 2022-61.
Second.
Hey, we have a motion, a second, any discussion or questions? Counselor Sharazai.
Yes, thank you. I just, I understand that there may not be someone here who can answer this now, but on page 11 of the packet, under service impact, there was mention of showers, locker services, and food support for the homeless. And I was wondering if we could just get a little bit more information about that and understand like, what does that look like between the bid and the city of Lakewood, who's providing those services?
Ms. Hudson?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I would ask our Economic Development Director, Robert Smith, to respond to that. And here she is, like magic. Thanks.
Good evening, Mr. Smith. Welcome.
Thank you. Very much appreciate that. Yes. And I did notice that detail on page 11. And I'm sorry, I don't know all of the details that are associated with this. I do know that the, the hub was set up this year and they, they opened that facility and perhaps it has something to do with that. I don't want to speculate too much further than that, but I will be able to get that information and then convey it back to, to council as to what exactly that program or those programs entail.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. That'd be great. And I know also of mention, the, the bid has signed up for a pilot program with Bayard Industries also to do some different programs to engage with our unhoused along the corridor. So. All right. Any other questions? Okay, I believe we have a motion, a second. And with that, please cast your votes.
Yes.
All right. Counselor Abel is an I, which would be seven I's, no nays for absent. The clerk, please read item 12 into the record.
Item 12, resolution 2022-62, authorizing the acceptance of real property located in the 16200 block of West Bayard Drive for open space and park purposes, including acceptance of a deed therefore.
Thank you. I'll now open the public hearing on resolution 2022-62. If you wish to speak, please press star nine. Okay, seeing none, I'll close that. And there is a presentation on Lakewood Speaks as well as a staff memo. And I guess I would just simply say, I don't have any questions, but in my tenure, it's, it's very rare when somebody is willing to want to give us a chunk of property this size for park purposes and really to do more preservation on Green Mountain. So I want to thank all the folks that are involved for your willingness to do this and the meaningful impact that this will have for our community as well as other communities here in the future. Mayor Protem, can I have a motion?
Yes, Mayor Paul, I move for the adoption of resolution 2022-62.
Second.
Okay, motion, a second, any questions or further discussion? All right, seeing, oh, Counselor Franks, please.
Thanks, Mayor Paul. I would just be remiss. My community is very obviously focused on open space. And so this is certainly something that brings a lot of pleasure to the community. So I would be remiss if I just didn't add to your comment earlier, Mayor. So thank you.
Yep, thank you very much. Okay, so again, this is for resolution 2022-62. Please cast your votes.
Heck, yes.
Okay, let the record reflect that we have a heck yes from Counselor Abel and six other hands up. So that's seven I's, zero nays for absent. That's a cool one. Again, that's, those are few and far between. So thank you. All right, move to item 13, which is general business. Counselor Sharazai, you have something in there. Floor is yours.
Yes, thank you. Sorry, I've got a bunch of tabs open. So I wanted, I had submitted something a little bit earlier when we were in the throes in the selection committee of many, many LAC nominations coming in and us working through that process. And so what I'm requesting is a conversation, a study session to sort of look at the LAC as a body and maybe make some modifications. Thirty, I, I wonder if other selection committee members feel like speaking up, but it feels like that number never changes. We are always, always looking to recruit more members. And, and so I'm wondering if there's a conversation about perhaps dropping that number down closer to 25. And then also recognizing that there are tremendous amount of experts on that body right now. And I know that we continue to source new fantastic committed, community members. And, and so I'm not really clear on like, the process to get projects to them. I've seen it done two different ways by Counselor Strom and Counselor Stewart. And then also, what's the cadence for the LAC to come to us? And how do we harness some of the great expertise that's coming out of that body to sort of learn and move some values forward in our community? And so I'm really hoping to make a motion for us to move this to a study session, but would love to hear from others if you had an opinion.
Great. All right. I thank you for that. And I have Counselor Franks, your hand is up.
Thanks, Mayor. I did want to just add to that. We certainly have heard from some of the folks who have been reapplying about maybe some of the, the, the work and how it gets distributed and how we, and maybe in a timely way, or maybe sometimes not so timely way, respond back. So I do think that there is a way for us to sort of understand, you know, some of the limitations, also maybe to remove some of the restrictions, like we have had some folks who've needed to temporarily step away from the LAC to take care of some personal matters and then need to reapply. And again, I think that there's just some process burdens that might be in place. We might want to look at additional subcommittees as a way to excite folks. We may want to also, you know, do a little bit better job of showcasing the work, spotlighting some of the work maybe in our upcoming, you know, newspaper that we put out. So I do think it's worth a conversation because I do think that we continue to, you know, to struggle to get those fully filled. And I know council has a lot of appetite for sending a lot of work to the LAC. But again, we now have to be cognizant of that maybe we are not fully staffed. So I'm in full support of some type of a study session in order to ferret out these details.
Thank you. Mayor Protem, Vincent?
Yes, I would agree with that. The only caution I would have is that I don't want to lock us into maybe 25, but to include how many people are on that committee and how those committees are divided or looked at. But yes, we've, we've struggled with this for a while, and I would be in full support of a study sessions. So thank you for bringing that up.
Great, thank you. Counselor Abel?
Thank you, Mayor. I agree. We have a wealth of community knowledge out there that we're not taking advantage of and are not, not enabling the committee, the commission to do what they need to do. So I'm willing to talk. Thank you.
Great, thank you. I concur with everything that's said, and I would imagine from that we have consensus to move that forward. And I think the other piece is important, you know, not only embracing their expertise and utilizing them to the best of their abilities and honoring their time commitment, but also what's the best way for council to deal with or to, you know, have that back and forth. So Ms. Hudson, do you need some clarification or you feel pretty comfortable with, with moving forward with something like that?
Um, no, I, I think this will be pretty straightforward. We'll schedule a study session, hopefully just with this one topic. It would be nice if we had representation from the LAC to help give some feedback. Also, we can maybe have a, a little short overview of how the LAC came about and how it started. I want to say we had either 72 or 64 members in the very early stages. So, but it certainly hasn't been looked at or modified for a long time. So it's, it's probably a good time to do that. And I'll make sure to set aside a study session. We'll look at the calendar and promote it far and wide so that anyone who's interested can join the conversation.
Right. Thank you so much.
Sure.
All right. Anything else under general business this evening? Okay, I will go ahead and skip 14 because Ms. Hudson does not have a report tonight as we will have a big meeting coming up next week. And I'll go to council reports. I have Ward five or Ward one. Who would like to go first? Don't all jump up at once.
Let's go with Ward one first, and I have no report.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Sharazai.
Yes, thank you. I have a couple of updates. And again, I would just ask to use my personal privilege up here to recognize as a first generation Iranian American, today marks the 24th day that we see young people in the streets fighting for their freedom. And so I just want to recognize that I stand in solidarity with them. I have two Ward one updates. The Wright Park Draft Master Plan is available, and this comes after two public meetings, surveys, and resident input. And so I am sorry that Counselor Olver isn't here because I did want to celebrate the inclusion of a dog park in this master plan, something I know that's been a priority for him. I also want to recognize that at the church at 20th and Sims in Ward one in the Apple Valley neighborhood will be paint recycling event this Saturday from nine to one. And that's it for me.
Great, thank you. And thank you certainly for, for sharing again, your, your personal story and, and it's super meaningful and powerful. So thank you. Ward two. Mayor Protem, Counselor Maya Guerrero?
I, I go first if you want me to. Okay, a couple of things. On the 18th, even though it's under the umbrella of the Two Creeks Annual Meeting, there will be a panel and there will be people from the new chief, security chief, and our district rep from RTD, as well as a cat, and I believe another police official and the mayor and the city council. You can, you can review this via Zoom or it's a 13, 1390 Benton Street at Mount Air Christian Church. The reason we're advertising this so much is because safety on the light rail and safety along some of these places has been a concern that, that people outside of the Two Creeks area have certainly been interested in. So there is that. Real quickly, on the 22nd, 40 West is having their only fundraiser for the year. And so you can buy tickets for that. Yep. And it's 40, $40 per person, or you can have various levels of sponsorship. And then Ward two will, combined with the meeting, the mega meeting, so they will not have, we will not have an individual meeting, but we'll be back on track in November. And that's my report.
Great, thank you. I do not see anybody from Ward three. Let me just take another look. Okay, Ward four, Counselor Franks.
Thanks again, Mayor. I do want to promote in Counselor Olver's absence tonight that he is holding a meeting, a Ward four meeting on Wednesday, October 12th, 7 to 9 p.m. at Lutheran Church of the Master, which is on 14099 West Jewel Avenue. The primary topic is going to be traffic engineering. He wants to talk about everything from smart red lights to self-driving cars. And then following that discussion, there will be an open discussion from Bear Creek Lake Park and to the Federal Center property. So definitely. So definitely encourage you, if your schedule permits, to attend that in-person meeting on October 12th, seven to nine PM. Thank you.
Right, thank you. Counselor Strom.
Thank you, Mayor. I, one announcement, well, I'm not sure we do, we'll have a upcoming ward meeting the first Saturday of November. I'm not sure of the topic on that. Counselor Jansen will be running that meeting. I did want to mention, you guys have heard our lots of gratitude that we have for our volunteer that's enabling us to run our hybrid ward, board meetings or run the ward meetings in a hybrid way. And we've just been informed that he will not be able to continue doing this. He is going to be moving out of Lakewood and is only available through January. So we are starting to broadcast out the need for another volunteer. We know that our community really does enjoy having the opportunity to click in on Zoom, especially on snowy days as we're getting ready to approach. So I will be looking for another Ward Five volunteer that can help us with our hybrid meetings. And that's my report for today.
All right, thank you. So just a reminder, so we will be back next week, which is the third Monday, the 16th, the 17th. But we'll have a hybrid chambers or online, and that will be our budget meeting, the second public hearing. So again, to council, you've been incredible with, with getting those questions in. I think there might be eight or nine pages now, and so we'll continue to push that out and a lot of great information. So thank you for doing that. We'll be prepared for that next week. Had the opportunity to attend the Moller Engineering. They moved over to the Belmar area, and that's about 130 plus jobs that will be staying here in Lakewood and took on a beautiful new space. And they've been in the city of Lakewood for 42 years. So congratulations to them and their new location. And, and really, it's cool to see all the cool projects that they have done throughout the state of Colorado. And then two last, lastly, two things. Had a cool presentation from the Red Cross, and I actually put a packet in the council office. If you're interested, they're willing to come out to ward meetings or come out and talk to the community about all things Red Cross and different things that they do and as well as different kinds of training. So if you're interested in that, I put that in the council office. And then lastly, we had a presentation on the City of Denver Social Equity Bonds, which was real fascinating and to see what they've been able to do with some of their folks that were utilizing high resources, whether it was jail, shelters, hospitals, and really look at better ways to put them in a better position. And that started with housing. And so there's a lot of information out there about this three or four-year project, and they're actually getting federal dollars to re-up and, and continue this. So just wanted to throw that out there as this council's continuing to look at different things as it relates to our responses. This might be something certainly in the future. And the conversation was, instead of individual cities doing it, is there a way that the region could come together and do something that would really impact all of us and all of our communities? So with that said, I'm going to be quiet so we can end at seven twenty-nine and not seven thirty. And thank you all for a wonderful meeting, very productive, a lot of great things. See you later.